Okay, so I'd like to call the Dover Select Board meeting to order on Tuesday, 7, October 7th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. First up is public comments.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've never done this before. My name is Andrew Dewayne and we're local business owners here being the great host in. And I know you are extremely busy tonight, but I wanted to share a letter, an open letter that I wrote to Vale Resorts this week about the recent closure of the daycare. I'm ready to express my deep disbelief that Vale Resorts' decision to exclude the Deerfield Valley community members from your daycare. This decision is driving a deep wedge between your organization and the local community. The daycare has been around for generations and is a place to community charities. Your decision has left dozens of local families scrambling to find alternatives where you live. The look on the daycare staff after the news was devastating, after knowing the work they put into their dogs. Our children love going to school and growing up with local friends in a safe and supportive environment. This decision has left a huge hole in everyone's heart and we've had no explanation about the reasoning. Just a memo sent to us informing us that we will no longer receive care after this. More needs to be done on your part to show that you are and want to be a part of this team. As of now, you're just showing that you not care about the community and I'm looking for solutions to a problem, not looking for solutions to a problem. And I respectfully request to reply to this email and to your two clean care session. Signed, myself and my wife Carrie, who have two parents need daycare. I know there's not a lot that the town can do, but I just wanted you to be aware of what's happening up there and how this affects the entire valley. And that there are a lot of people that come up.
Thank you. Anything else?
So, good man, it's done. So, my comments mirror Amens.
Can I ask your name?
My name is Andrew Coller and my wife and I own the Kids Off Inn. So, like I said, my comments mirror Amens. I also, we also sent an email to Vale Resorts and their GM, Leah Potts. I did receive a call from Leah this morning. Pointed out in a conversation with her, received quite a bit of information. My points are specifically revolving around the Kupala and Snowy Lodge because at this point, we've been fielding enough inquiries and comments and concerns from our guests who come into the valleys tourists and who are essentially saying, why are these properties in apparent state of disrepair? And being that the Kids Off Inn is directly north of one of those properties on Mount Snow. And then Snowy Lodge not being far. We hear it way more than we'd like to. So, I did, I'm happy to provide the email if anyone would like.
Yeah, I think that would be great if you could give it to Jeanette and sure to distribute it.
Yeah, absolutely. Where do I start? Where should I start? So, Vale says experience of lifetime to do good is one of their values, preserve our natural environments and contribute to the success of our local communities. Apparently, the Snowy Lodge is adjacent to a wildlife corridor and given the drought conditions, the building could very well pose a danger to the local wildlife. I know that we also have another building, but that's unrelated to this topic, but the silo on the other side, same thing, same concern, being that we're the commercial property directly adjacent. So, that is why we're voicing this. So, it is, these buildings, these properties have indeed become an eyesore and one that we consistently hear about from our guests, serve others, it's another thing that Vale says. Lead with service to create the experience of lifetime for one another and our guests, who are they serving other than themselves, they certainly do not appear to be serving the community. In our opinion, there must be a paradigm shift of how Mount Snow is seen by visitors and tourists as their negative view of Mount Snow directly impacts the communities of Deerfield Valley. If Mount Snow can shift its perspective from its perceived view of this is our world, stay out of it, to one of, this is the community we operate in and we care about it, then it would be mutually beneficial for all. Understanding Leah's point of view that Vale is a publicly traded company, these are, this is based on our conversation earlier. Not all of their secrets can be revealed instantly, however, there should be better communication between Mount Snow Vale and this local community. This will allow the community members to be kept in the light when it comes to items or issues such as childcare or town optics, buildings that don't give the town a great look, that directly affect the valley. Local businesses in town relying in some manner on tourism and Mount Snow is one of the tourism drivers here. One of those last five years were things that were planned and executed by Mount Snow. This town should be able to pressure Mount Snow to be a better presence within the community and my recommendation is that Mount Snow tries to provide something with community liaison. Somebody that, not the GM, but somebody who can communicate what Mount Snow is up to, what are they doing, how are they helping the community? What are they doing to serve Vale? Because our success, Amens' success, every business in town, their success is somewhat reliant on the success of Mount Snow, like communication plays a big role. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any more comments on either of these topics?
And the first one, yes, right. Trying to bash Vale Resorts by any means, our success depends on. We just need some communication between them and they aren't looking into us and the town, they say, oh, it's for your employees only, that's the new thing. We look, we want to find and become the part time employees there. But we consider ourselves ambassadors, everybody in this town considers themselves ambassadors for Mount Snow because that, this is our town, this is the mountain, this is our town.
And if I could add to that, having guests come to our inns this past weekend, I sent half the team to Stratton to go on these foliage lift rides. How does it feel, somebody that loves the community saying, yeah, you can't stay here, go to Stratton? It's not, it's not great.
Damn. Wilson says that if the chen or takes them to the top of the mountain. They had a, you know, pair of the chen, takes people to the top, which people complain a lot in the coffee bar, especially with the grocery. What they also complain about, you know, what are they doing to building across the street, it's a constant nuisance.
Yeah, we don't want to sound like we're bashing, but when we experience the guest input, it directly.
There's a lot of direct communication or fail here to revolve in the street, so. Yeah, it has on our website, so like we're part of their business, so it's just frustrating.
I understand your frustrations and you're right, there's not a lot we can do about it, but it, you know, these are things that the community and Vale should work together to try to resolve, if possible. But thank you so much for showing up.
Thanks for sharing your information. And I wish there was something we could do and maybe we'll have to reach out and see if there is something that you can do at this point.
You're up.
I think there'll be more to be talked about, that's the goal now.
Dialogue.
Any other public comments? If not, I'm going to ask Sarah to read into the record a letter from Stephanie and Marshall Brooks concerning the Blue Brook Vast Trail Bridge.
Dear Dover Select Board, a little over a week ago, it came to our attention that a bridge was being built on our property by the Deerfield Valley Stumpjumper Snowmobile Club without either our knowledge or permission. The bridge in question crosses Blue Brook via the vast trail on the west side of Route 100. Jim Martin's firearm training of New England businesses located to the immediate south of the bridge at 561 Route 100 and is on the same side of the road. When questioned as to whether, as to what he and his crew were doing on our property, DBSJ Vice President Mike Garber replied that they were replacing an older wooden bridge that had either collapsed or was about to. As to why he had not notified us as to his intentions, Mr. Garber replied that he had tried looking in the phone book for someone to contact, but without success. He appeared none too sure in fact as to the identities of the property owners, i.e. us. The original wooden bridge was already gone when we visited the site. An approximately 12-foot long span consisting of I-beams positioned atop concrete abutments was already set in place on either side of the Brooks Banks. Already set in place on either side of Brooks Banks had replaced it. When contacted, zoning administrator Tabby Friedman was surprised to learn of the new bridge's existence. No parting permitting or plan approval had been issued to date per the Dover zoning department. Similarly, at the state level, we were informed by Josh, and I will mispronounce his name, Carvajal, of the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation Rivers Program that the DBSJ had submitted only a partially completed permitting application to the state and this only after the bridge's construction had begun. Additionally, according to Mr. Carvajal, the replacement bridge is improperly sighted as it is located at the confluence of two streams. In his view, no bridge should be positioned there at all. Lastly, according to Vast Trail regulations for any bridge project to be undertaken, all of the names of the property owners along with their signatures must appear on an agreement pertaining to the project at hand. Vast Trail Executive Director Cindy Locke has no agreement with our signatures on file. We understand that Mr. Garber has come before the select board in search of funding with reference to the aforementioned bridge replacement project. If this is indeed the case, we thought that the select board should know the facts as we understand them. Please find attached photos, respectfully submitted Stuart Brooks and Stephanie Green.
Yeah, that's, that's right. No, I didn't bring it when we have it, why? Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
There's a letter that we're gonna.
Yeah. I'm impressed, I think.
You're bringing a new document off for us to read, that's why we're sitting here doing nothing.
I have that letter available if you'd like me to read it. I could do that, I have it here.
Uh, I think she's on her way up.
Okay.
You can read it though, Patrick.
If you want to.
I don't mind. I don't mind.
I didn't print it out.
Okay, so here is the newest letter dated.
This is October 5th. Dear Dover Select Board, this is to update you regarding developments concerning the Blue Brook Vast Replacement Bridge. We have retained a lawyer to review the situation and to assist us in achieving an equitable solution. We also requested from Josh Carvajal of the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation Rivers Program a two-week extension to the state's deadline pertaining to the permitting of the bridge. To review, the state permit for the new bridge would require both our signatures. Mr. Carvajal is okay with this, the new deadline is October 15th, 2025. We have not heard from the Vast Office since early September, this despite our leaving numerous messages with Executive Director Cindy Locke to contact us. This is especially surprising given Vast requires that of the assignment agreement between itself and the property owners for all new bridge projects. We also learned that Vast may have supplied the recycled I-beams for the replacement bridge, yet when we first contacted the Vast Office, they appear to be unaware of any new bridge activity on our properties. The exact relationship between Vast and the Deerfield Valley Stumpjumper is a confusing one indeed. The DBSJ delivered a proposal to Andy McLean with the view that it be passed along to us, which it was. We have since learned from Andy that there is a new second proposal. As of this writing, this latest proposal has yet to be forwarded to Andy or in turn to us. Since the Blue Brook Bridge story broke in the news, we have received phone calls from friends and neighbors regarding their less than positive experiences with the DBSJ. Frankly, this has led to considering stronger response to the current DBSJ trespass and the propensity to misrepresent the facts on permit applications, et cetera. Sincerely, Stuart Brooks and Stephanie Green.
Okay, anybody have any comments?
Sure, I got a lot of comments, I'm not gonna say anything.
Now, all right, additions and deletions to the agenda? Let's see, nothing. First one is discussed letter from Kathy Kaufman regarding the West Dover Cemetery.
West Dover Cemetery is a Jake or a butts my property on Broadtown Road. It's a private cemetery and I'm the only remaining member. Everyone else is kind of God.
So, they're there.
So, they're in the lot, they're in, they're in.
I think they're in there, a number of other places, but and for the past, I don't know, I guess, almost since my husband died, I've been taking care of the cemetery myself. I've been mowing it, I've been hiring somebody to mow it, I can't get anybody to mow it anymore. I've been paying the liability insurance on it, which keeps rising every year and I just can't do it anymore. So, I did talk to Andy about what I need to do to abandon it. And according to the state, we have to, in order for the town to take it over, we have to decide to, a town meeting to elect a cemetery committee. Then, I can deed the property to the town and then the town can take it over and maintain it. There are still lot plots in the cemetery, it's not full. And that's what this is, this is a map of it, I know where the blank spaces are. So that if the town needs some cemetery space, it's there. And right now, because of the bylaws from the cemetery, I haven't changed anything and it's the cheapest piece of land in Vermont. That's $50 for a lot.
Wow.
A plot goes in.
For a lot.
Yes. So, you know, if you want to buy your, I mean, and there's still, there's, there's still several people in town that have bought lots. You know, who are still living, so I'd like to see the cemetery stay active. So, they, you know, we, they can be buried there, I mean, my husband is buried there and I also have two other plots for my kids if they want. So, I guess the next step is just to see if the town's interested and if we should put it on the agenda for town deeds.
This is a problem with all of our cemeteries.
I know that.
We, Eastover, what's the cemetery?
Eastover by the church?
Yes.
Is definitely.
As, and Dover Center Cemetery on Holland Road.
Right.
While we do have some money, it is increasingly hard to maintain it and I don't know about the one on Handle Road.
That's, that's fine.
They're fine, they have a good cemetery association?
We have a good cemetery association, we have an annual work fee and we have people who come out and.
Do you buy liability insurance?
I don't know.
Because we do, and I know what Kathy's saying.
I've been paying and this, this year it was, it was $500, I can't remember that anymore.
So, and we do, the town does take care of small abandoned cemeteries in various parts of the town.
Yeah.
So, we already are looking over some abandoned.
That's, there are five, four or five?
Yeah, same thing Wilmington's doing too, I think, right?
Wilmington has a cemetery commit, commission and they take care of the cemeteries.
Yeah.
I know they got somebody up like to walk an hour, get to cut the grass once a close a year.
I think it's something we should talk about and the town should make decisions during budget season, if this is something we're going to look at, I really want to talk to Travis with how it's going to impact our because obviously, that's a lot and we've added new properties to the town's role so that some of that falls on, on our maintenance crew, so.
Yeah.
It, we, I think we're at the point where we need to start really seriously considering it and I brought this up at town meetings several times, that this is, this is the problem with, with aging, people running the, you know, the committees on these cemeteries, so, yes.
And I know, we, we had money and I was, it was enough to mow it at least once or twice a year, but in one of the storms, maybe about six years ago, a huge ash tree came down over the whole front of the cemetery and that wiped out the money we had, it was $2,500 to take it out.
And then also, if the town took over some of the cemeteries, a lot of them need work, stones are, they're, they're, they're falling over. Some of it can be done in-house, but some of it would have to be some extra, because it's, it's, it is a bit of an eyesore at times compared to other cemeteries that look really nice, so. I, I would agree that it's something that the town needs to finally address after, you know, I think we've kind of ignored it. Yes, sir. I was just going to ask if we think that it would make sense for Kathy and Travis to walk the cemetery together so Travis could get a sense of what would be involved and be able to discuss budgeting a little bit better.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Patrick's got his hand up.
Patrick.
The, the, the only other thing I would add to what you said, Vicki, was that this was very specifically, this item was, was, was part of the town plan, is it included in the town plan? I don't know whether you raised it or Kathy raised it or someone raised it, but somebody raised it and it, and it ended up being in the plan. So, it is consistent with that, is the only thing I would add.
Thank you for reminding me of that. Shannon?
So, I have the unique perspective of probably being the only person in town that goes into all of these cemeteries. So, my Girl Scout troop, we take care of the flags every May along with Jeanette and Andy does some of the outliers, so if for some reason Kathy's not available or Travis needs somebody else to go with him, I'm definitely familiar with all of these properties and can give some, some help, but you know, it is, I do feel a responsibility to them and I think Kathy's done a great job, but I think we should certainly see what we can do as a town to help preserve them.
Thank you for that, Shannon.
Well, that would be, Shannon, Shannon's going, so we could to put together what we have for cemeteries in town so that we have it, do we have something like that?
Yes, we do. Yes, we have a whole roster of each cemetery because we put place flags there.
So, we have that information.
We have that information, yes, and I think it's very important to, you know, to maintain the history of these cemeteries, so we don't go back to 1700s and also, you know, to honor the people who are buried there, that, you know.
Sarah, does that list break out the ones that are privately managed, the ones that are taken care of by the town?
No, no, I actually, I should, I should take that back, it doesn't list, it lists all the veterans that we don't flag on, but we do have other maps, I'm sure, like what can be.
And I always fill in when somebody drives a lot. So, I'm sure there's something in the land records.
So.
I don't know how up to date it is.
So, my understanding going forward, Kathy just basically abandoned hers, we end up, you can carry her name, correct? Alright, so.
Yes.
So, it's, it behooves us to come up with a better plan, but I'm sure some cemeteries aren't going to want to, like Sarah's a little hard on, yeah, the road is good, so they're probably not going to want anything to do with it, so. But maybe the other one, and I know it's the other one on Eastover, that you have to be a certain person.
The Dover Center Cemetery, you have had to live in Eastover for seven years to buy a plot and a plot or two is $800.
Right, well, that's pretty cheap, I don't get that feeling.
Oh, I got some nice ones.
So, yes, it's the.
So, if we start taking, you know, as we, if we do take over other cemeteries and we put together a cemetery commission and maybe Patrick knows better how to, you know, the whole town plan, you know, we can't, I'm assuming we can't discriminate, you know, one cemetery exists or that type of person, so that's a whole nother.
Right, and some cemetery associations, like the one down by the church, may be very interested in having the town take it over, just like Kathy's interested and ones like the one on Handle Road and Dover Center, maybe not at this point. Okay, you got us thinking.
Right.
Thank you.
Either way, if you abandon it, we're going to take care.
I know, but you know, I'm, I'm happy to formally turn it over, I have all the files, I've got all the records and stuff, so.
That's kind of cool.
It's, you know, it's, it's there, I just don't want to see it, you know, go.
Well, thank you.
Plots are available.
It's about six, I think, we're still left in there. And what we, what we did, the latest thing we did with the last meeting that we had, which was years ago, is if you're cremated, you only need one lot, you can bury two people in one. Which is like, my husband's buried, he was cremated, so, and, and my name's already on the headstone, so that's where I'll be. And then I have two others that I bought at the time for my kids if I needed them and so there's, you know, there's room for more than just six people.
Yeah. Good. Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Next, we have to Consider Town Hall Use by Emerald Ray, we're monthly social dancers and Emerald is here on Zoom.
I am, hello, can you hear me alright?
Yes.
Okay, great, yes, I'm in, thank you so much for letting me zoom in, I'm in Michigan right now, so it's really nice to see you all. And yeah, thank you Jeanette for inviting me to come today and I just wanted to talk to you all about the possibility of doing a monthly social dance at Dover Hall. I'm a musician in the area, I live on Wyclie Road and I lived, I lived, I, I lived here for four years and then moved to Nashville for a couple of years and have come back now, so I'm very excited to be back in the area and I'm very excited to be trying to do some more local things because I tour nationally, like I've been in Michigan, Michigan right now and I'm trying to work on staying home a bit more. So, my friends and neighbors in, in the area were wanting me to do something, have been wanting me to do something like this for quite a while and I know there are kind of, you know, some, some rules to, to get through or whatever in terms of using the hall as a resident and I, I don't own, I don't have a nonprofit at this point, although I am very seriously considering starting a nonprofit, so this might be a temporary problem. But the basic idea is I play for contra dancing and I teach Kaylee dancing as well, which is like Celtic style social dancing and the idea is to see if we can get a monthly social dance going in the Dover Hall and just have it be a family event that anybody can come to and pay sort of a like $15 to $20 suggested donation is how we do a lot of these events and just kind of get the community together and have a really good time on a regular basis, which would be really nice. So, I just wanted to throw that out there and I would be organizing it and playing for it as well and kind of hiring other musicians and callers to come in and organize the thing with me. But any profit would sort of go just to pay us musicians, it's not going to be very much money, to be totally honest, so. It's not like, you know, it's, it's not that, you know, it's, the profit thing is, is kind of just paying us as, as vendors but pretty much like paying us as private contractors to kind of do this gig, so. That's, that's the idea, that's where the money would be going. So, I don't know if that's considered making a profit or what, but yeah, it's just mostly why I'm doing this is to, is to get the community together and just make that possible to happen for me and for the other musicians coming in. So, I just wanted to see if, if there was any interest from the board in, in having this happen, if this is something that I would be able to book the hall on a sort of a regular monthly schedule, like for example, like, you know, every third Saturday of the month or something like that. And if it was sort of within the rules of the hall to do this and if it's not, then what I would have to do to make that happen. So, yeah, are there any questions about that?
I think Saturdays, Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays could be problematic for that. They are the busy times for the hall and they are when, you know, private events happen, weddings, showers, all that kind of thing, so to have it booked up for a kind of profit situation may be hard. It really does get a huge amount of usage during the weekends.
Okay. But a weekday might be something that, like again, it would just be like once a month, so.
Yeah.
Like maybe a Thursday might work?
Do we have any standardized rules?
Yes, we do.
What are the?
We developed them while you were on the board.
I'm sure you did, there's a lot of things that happened in the 12, 13 years I've been on the board. I don't have as good a memory as you do, so I'd like to look at it, thank you. Sure. Sure.
There's one statement on here in the user agreement, it just says the town hall is not intended for and may not be used for private profit. So. That's the only.
So, that's the only thing that's.
Well, I had a question about that, I mean, is it, somebody was telling me that there was sort of a like a craft fair, like a Christmas sale or something like that at the hall? Where people are selling things? How, how is that different?
It, I don't, I don't know that it is, but that's one day a year, you know, it's not.
Right, right.
Twelve months.
We all should.
Right, okay, alright.
Raffles.
I mean, so, so here's the thing. I could do this in another town. I could like rent the hall in Wilmington. Like I'd rent Memorial Hall in Wilmington and do it that way. Um, uh, so it's, like, I could do this somewhere else. I just wanted to check in with you and ask, because this is my hometown and like I would, I would like to do it in Dover. But, yeah, if it's, if it's really a sticking point with the rules, then that's a bummer, but, um, yeah. I'll just have to try somewhere else, that's all.
Patrick.
Yeah, um, I, I guess where I'm processing this, and maybe it's, it, there, there are some different rules here, is trying to see how this differs from the concerts in the park, um, that we do during the, during the summer. Um, I mean, it feels to me like if there's a way to get to enable something like this, and I, maybe there are a few extra steps we have to go through. It's, it's the kind of thing that, you know, it, it, it feels good in terms of bringing energy into the community if there's a way to get there. I, I just, you know, Emerald, I'm the newest one here, so there may be obstacles that I'm not aware of, but.
Oh, sure.
That's how I process it, yeah.
Absolutely, and I'm sure there's stuff I'm not aware of.
Emerald, you have to be called on, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm done, I'm done.
Thank you, Patrick. Joe.
So, again, uh, I, 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 I'm gonna err with Patrick. If there's something we can do to make this work, I think we should. And she brings up a good point. There are people that are going there and they're, they're making money. So it's not to say that we, you know, can't have someone do it by donation or whatever in the future. Obviously booking it like our craft sales or like we just had Dover Day. I, I bought maple syrup and I bought apple pies and those people are making money. They're not there, you know, as free. So I think it'd be a great idea. We could do it as a pilot program somehow. Um, but I totally agree that, as Vicki said, Friday, Saturday and Sunday are our days that we're getting weddings, events like that, or people of the regular public that are taxpayers within the town. That, I think we, we, we don't wanna do that. There's an opening, you know, in the schedule, you know, however, you know, Jeanette knows better and Andy how it books up. Then we could, you know, if there's an opening on Saturday, say in three weeks and she wanted to do something, I don't see why we are. The, the building's there to be able to be used. So she's a, a resident of the town. And I just don't think we should book it like straight and, you know, whatever. We, we, and we're already using the town park and those musicians are making money at the town park. I think it's kind of like.
But it's a free event.
And, and I just said, what did I just say?
I did, sorry dude.
Do it by donation, so anyone can go. And if she wants to follow those guidelines, and I'm sure at the park, I, I, I'm sorry, I have not attended. I probably, I would think those musicians, and maybe Shannon can say yes or no, do they put another bucket out there for a little more money, Shannon? Or no? We're gonna allow them or do we allow them?
So we don't have anything in their contracts that preclude that, but it's different where that's the town, we're providing those events for people in the town, so we're paying those bands. Um, if they have a tip jar, they might, some of them might have that, um, which is different than, um, asking for donations for attendance for things. Um, but I, I think, you know, we can try this. I think, um, like when we tried to have the concert series go year round and we used Town Hall, um, I think we did like Wednesdays, um, so we'd have to look at the calendar. But, um, it's just a different feeling and we just wanna make sure, um, we're clear that it is, you know, by donation, that it's not a town. Um, like we're not putting on the dances. And so however we advertise that, um, I think is fine. But, um, I think it's great to offer something for people in town to do. Um, I think we just need to look at the dates and try to find something that works, um, on the whole. And we can always, we can always try it and maybe it doesn't work for everybody, um, but I think it's a great thing to try. Um, but it's definitely, we don't wanna think about it like the concerts in the park, just because those are very different with how they're paid for and planned.
I really disagree with that.
Sarah, Shannon. Well, I was just gonna say, wanted maybe talk to Shannon about how we can make this as a town spot, if we wanna make this town a concert event, and how that might function. But that's very.
Okay, hold on, Dan, have his hand up. Emerald, have your hand up.
And for the celebration, the Dover Historical Society got four members at the, at the day.
Okay, so Emerald, you got. Do you wanna say something?
Oh, I was gonna say, like, sure, I was gonna say on that note, like, um, I was happy to take on the, the, the risk in the work of organizing it, but if the town wants to put it on, that would be even better all around, to be totally honest. So, um, yeah, that would, that would be great. And I could organize sort of the events, but having a guarantee for the musicians and even if you wanted to make a free event, that would be really great. And you could still take a donation and have that, the donation go back to the town or go towards that, um, guaranteed thing. So if you guys wanted to do that, I would be totally up for that. Um, but, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm up for discussing what the options are, if there are any. So that's all I wanted to say.
Sarah wants to clarify on that. I didn't mean the town take it over and, and not, and organize it and run it. I meant that, that it could be something through the Economic Development Department. There's gonna have to be some funding available.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Not that we would, that, not that Shannon would start booking acts and organizing me to. I'm not trying to put that on her plate. Okay, just. Why?
Could I, could I, could I re-interject there? That is actually what I meant. I meant if the town wanted to provide some funding for this, I would be happy to do the booking and organizing of it. I'm saying if it's easier for the, the financials for the town to sort of offer, offer the musicians a guarantee, exactly like you would for the, the music in the park thing. Um, and then you, and then you as a town can decide whether you wanna take those donations to recoup. Um, and then I would be happy to organize the, the event. Does that make more sense?
I think we understand now what, what that is. I'm not, I don't know how I feel about this, actually, at this point. I'd like to see maybe one happen and see what happens, you know, um, versus guarantee, you know, jumping on board with it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. What did the rest of the board think?
What?
What? So I would like.
Trial run.
A trial run. Yeah, yeah. Midweek.
Really?
Yes.
I suppose people dancing the other day, they look, they're having great times in full house.
I make a motion, we try a trial run.
Right.
And you what kind of response we get and maybe we get some public and some taxpayers to go and have some fun. I think that's a great idea.
And would you mind amending your motion to making it midweek?
Midweek.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we're gonna consider the Town Hall use by Kaya Steele for weekly yoga classes.
I'll need to give her some direction on how to go forward.
She should talk to Shannon.
Okay.
She's got.
She's still there.
Shannon, would you reach out to Emerald about how this might, how, how to get a trial run going and find dates?
Um, yes, I will get her info from Jeanette.
Thank you. Yep.
I, yeah, I'm still here. Thank you so much for considering the proposal. I appreciate, appreciate that. Thank you all.
Thank you. And I assume you're Kai.
My name is Kai Steele and I'm actually grateful that Emerald went before I did. I mean, this is a whole new idea, not for me. So, um, she kind of like started all this interview motion. Um, again, my name is Kai. I grew up here. I went to Wilmington High School. Wilmington High School was a thing. Daughter to Craig Wayne, who was very Wayne, if any of you know them. Um, anyway, I moved away for thirty years and I've been back. And I've been back here. I live on Five Thomas Lane. So I'm right next to, uh, the community center there. Um, and I've been a yoga teacher since, uh, twenty twelve. Uh, I've been many things. I've been a personal trainer, uh, riki master, massage therapist, yoga teacher, lots of things. And I have not been very active in my own practice. I haven't taught in a while. And I am a firm believer of bodies in motion stay in motion. And I can tell you that I have not been in motion. It doesn't feel very good. And I thought, you know, I have this knowledge, this information, and I cannot be the only one that wakes up in a stiff and sore and wants direction, wants to be able to be involved in movement, to do things safely. And I thought, you know, maybe I can offer a yoga class somewhere. And because Town Hall's at the top of my brow, I thought, I'm gonna ask. Um, so for yoga, I mean, it's a little more than once a month. So it would be more beneficial for people to have something that is at least weekly. Um, so I was considering a Wednesday, either at ten AM or sometime after work, depending on, uh, what might work. Um, ideally, it would be great to have some sort of a donation or something to cover, um, my time. But, um, honestly, I just really, I want to move again. And in a way that I will be do when I guide others. It's very hard for me, even though I know what to do, to get up in the morning and just do my little thing and live around the dogs. So I thought, maybe others wanna do this. And I can lean and inspire others. And, you know, I have certainly witnessed enough through personal training and massage, yoga and all that, that, um, you know, movement really does make a difference in your way of life. It makes a difference with you mentally, emotionally and physically. And, um, I mean, I'm not a traditional yogi, um, by any stretch. Uh, there was certainly a time in my life when I was very, very dedicated and fully in. But, um, I wanna offer like a beginning class, uh, something where people can be introduced to yoga. Yoga's a very big, and it's not just physical, it's also spiritual. Um, but without getting all into that, really just allowing people to feel themselves and to, um, come in touch with their bodies and be in a safe place to do it. So like Emerald, I just wanted to put it out there and see if that's something that we can possibly figure out.
Questions, comments?
I think it's worth investigating how we can structure it in a way that would work. Knowing that there might be times where the, the, the slot might not work because we had meeting or, um, something else going on.
People moving in for.
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm thinking with, you know, I mean, if it's something that's somewhat regular, I mean, you're making your announcement and you're saying, you know, we know yoga class this week, or it may be a different day or a different time or something. I don't even know if it's something people wanna do. I just know how I feel when I move. And I know other people would feel the same way or say, I did, you know.
So how many people do you envision potentially coming to this?
I, I couldn't even venture a guess. I suppose it would depend on whether we were in season or not. And if it was primarily locals or if we had absators or second owners or whatever as well. I mean, probably, um, the maximum that I have ever thought of in times, probably thirty, which is a lot. Um, but I'm not necessarily seeing that be something that big. Um, at least not at the beginning. We'll be waiting ten. Um, that would be regular enough. You know, and then it would be worth it.
Yeah. For what it's worth, I took yoga classes, um, over in Eastover. It was usually between five and seven people that would show up.
Yeah.
That already at the home?
No, it was actually at someone's private home.
Hmm, so, don't, don't the bone builders use it too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, bone builders have it booked Tuesdays and Thursdays in the mornings to do, like, tend to meet, I believe.
Except like.
But they know, right, they know that we can alert that, or to you, a day that it's not available. And they're perfectly fine with that.
Shannon?
Um, I was just wondering, so I know the library had regular yoga offerings, um, and those had stopped as instructors became unavailable. I didn't know if she had already spoken to the library about.
Well, that's a great idea.
Restarting theirs.
Well.
Joe.
We're all just like discussing this, but first of all, I think it's a great idea and we should have something within our town to offer people. So the bone, and, and I don't know what time you're looking to do it, but it's, I, I personally do yoga and I wish that we had more classes level. I have access to the Grand Son Hotel, which we had more yoga classes at the time. I could do it. So I think if Tuesday and Thursday, the bone builders go from ten to twelve, if you were gonna do like, and I don't know if you're gonna do it earlier or later, it'd be great to be on the same day. But maybe some of the bone builders, you'd be able to capture some of that. We're not utilizing the building more like it's not being used every day. So if someone wanted to use it, would be my only suggestion. But the other big suggestion, like Sarah said, it would be great if you could do, if the library was still wanting to do it, that, that might be the better option. That is the hardest thing for us in series, to have someone that wants to do it on a regular basis that lives here and, how should I say, is not in it for the money, to get my bill.
I do.
That's part of the problem.
That's a really good idea, but I, I agree. Check out the library first, because if they're missing an instructor and they want, they, they also advertise it. So, um, I, I would definitely go that route. And if that doesn't work, uh, it sounds like it, it, you know, we might be able to, to make something happen. Okay, anything else? Moving on, even to more interesting things. Initial review of the twenty twenty-six health insurance plans.
We're not as horrifying as we thought.
So Jeanette provided all kinds of information. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
About rates. Yes.
Do you have any of those?
Yeah, just give us the, the overview for today.
So, um, so I sent to both, uh, Blue Cross and MVP's rates for nine twenty-six. Um, our current plan that we have is the Silver Reflective, the twenty twenty-six rates only increased by four point five nine percent, which I was expecting nine something. So that was, uh, like, yeah, that's not bad. Um, I mean, as, as things go, obviously MVP rates are, are lower than Blue Cross, but we've had Blue Cross for a number of years and the same plan for a number of years. Employees seem to be happy with it. Um, it seems to work well. Um. It has, that's it. Um, we're also this year, we are, well, Blue Cross is switching back to Health Equity for the HRA, which is what we had previously, to My Money. So, which they own both companies, but, um, for some reason it's changed the path to just Health Equity, which I think is a good thing because we had Health Equity previously and it seemed to run a lot seamlessly than some of my folks.
I just asked a question with that real quick, as we know a little bit more. So Blue Cross, Bruce, whatever you wanna call it.
Blue Cross, Bushido.
They're, they have two different people that actively manage the HRA, correct? Is that what you're saying? Well, you said you went to.
Different entities.
Different entities. Health Equity, um, uh, a subgroup of Health Equity, which is called My Money, took over Blue Cross's HRA administration, probably maybe two or three years ago. Um, previously to that, we had Health Equity, just.
So they're going back.
So now we're moving back into Equity.
But is it owned by Blue Cross, Bushido, or outside companies that get you or what? Okay.
That's right.
So. Alright, this, well, this, the process, sorry. With all this, it's more short, thank you.
Thanks. Um, so over, I gave you, I think I sent you a comparison over last year with the new rates for this year. Obviously it went up a huge amount, uh, last year. I mean, it was almost, what, twenty-three percent? It was crazy. So this year it looks like it's not so crazy, even though, um, obviously it's still, uh, uh, hefty expense.
So this year it looks like it's not so crazy, even though um, obviously it's still uh, uh, hefty expense. Uh, over the monthly going, staying with the same plan we have, um, it's gonna be a seventeen hundred dollar increase monthly for the premiums. Uh, which would be a yearly increase of about twenty thousand, twenty one thousand, if we stick with this same plan, um.
Well, that is incredibly better than I thought it was gonna be.
Yes.
But the Green Mountain Care Board did shut a lot of it down.
Right.
Which doesn't, which means next year, guess what?
Yeah.
You know.
You know, it's so volatile.
It is.
But overall, like, it wasn't as quite a shock as it could have been. Or as it's been in the past. And I know open enrollment starts November first, um, I think they, you know, um. Design it to be in place by mid-November so that we can get everything, um, we'll be issuing cards, et cetera. Um, for twenty twenty six to be active starting January first. So obviously, we have a couple more meetings between then now and then, but in my opinion, the sooner we can make a decision, the easier it will be to roll that.
Okay, well, thank you for this work. This was uh, very useful, very nice. Thank you, Jeanette. Any other comments on the rates?
No.
No. Okay, so the next agenda item is to set, discuss hiring an advisor to assist health insurance decisions. Joe, you asked for this?
Yeah, so I think it becomes a time where we need uh, another entity to kind of look at what we're providing for our employees. Not that we wanna change anything, but at least to be able to have eyes of someone that's in the business selling to groups. But we can get a better understanding, make sure we're doing the best we can for our boys and also for our taxpayers. So I, you know, I, I called Vicky and said, you know, bring it up in a public meeting. And uh, you know, it's like what it's just us kind of deciding if that's something we wanna do, also put together a benefits package of what the employees, what their whole benefit package is and just put a no, different set of eyes on it. I mean, Jeanette is, I'm not taking away from Jeanette, she's doing a super job with it. It's just puts, you know, you know, that just doesn't mean health insurance, it means the adult medical program that they have, the life insurance, disability insurance, all those sets. Look and see if, if we're getting the best rates that we possibly can. You know, I'm not saying Jeanette's not out searching it, you know, but whatever, there could be other things out there that could benefit our employees. Well, that's why I brought it up, you know, the only, the only big take was obviously if we go forward doing something like this is data collection, you know, how we, how have we done with our H R A, doing it the way we have with the silver plan? Is that giving us the best deal or should we be with the gold plan or should we be with the bronze plan? To give the way we structure our insurance plan to our employees is different than other towns do and other companies do. So there could be some savings there, there could be better policies that we could have for the whole town. So that's why I would like to, I can't, I can't spend three hundred hours to learn it all. I'd rather use someone that's in the business. So we would be hiring an independent person, not going to an insurance agent per se to see what gift for better rates on everything. It's more, it could, what, what is out there for us that's involved in the business?
Jeanette?
So, one, who would that person be and how much does that cost? And can that be done within a month?
Well, it can be done. There can probably all be done.
By, I mean, who are
Well, this, this is something that we would discuss. This would be something outside of, you know, if, if it's something we wanna discuss, then we would have to discuss. You know, the cost is gonna be nominal, you know, talking maybe a thousand dollars, twenty five hundred dollars. Normal compared to what the size and amount of insurance and different things we have going on. It's, it's kind of, um, it behooves us to make sure that we're educated on everything that we're doing for the town. And we have a resource to go to. We, we look to you as a resource all the time. That's fine, but it's also good to have someone else that puts eyes on for us. Sort of like, I'll give you, for instance, for paving, you know, now we have someone that, you know, we learned how to do paving and drill holes and it's the same thing. Someone else just putting eyes on what we're doing, correct or incorrect?
Yeah, but we're not, we're not drilling holes and we're paving.
No, I'm just saying, when Keith came in, which, you know, he went and got to put the class, this is stuff that we do. We audit, it's basically auditing and making sure we're doing the best that we can. We have not done that. You just not to say, I'm, I'm saying Jeanette's doing a great job, but Jeanette doesn't do this day in, day out. There's other people at work just, it seems like some days you do.
Here she does.
Sometimes you do and I'm not saying, I'm not, it's not, it's not to say that you're, you know, I, I get the defensiveness. But um, that's all I would say. Patrick has his hand up and wants to say something.
Patrick?
Yes, um, I'm wondering if this is something V L C T's H R consultation program could provide some insight on and whether that, you know, might just be the most feasible way, particularly given the very narrow timeframe we're working in here.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't think, as narrow as you think it is, it's not as narrow as it is, but
Well, either way, either way, you know, I see
Let Patrick speak.
In either way, either way, I, 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 I believe they have this H R consultation program that's meant to, I mean, it sounds to me like you're asking a lot of questions. It's not just how much we're spending on health insurance is, is this, is this the best program? Have, you know, are there other things we could be doing? There's broader questions you just mentioned. And if that's your question, then it feels like that, that if there's somebody or some part of V L C T that can answer those questions, that might be the way to tackle that. I mean, I've been through this on the commercial side. It takes a while to do this, I think, um, you know, I just don't know when we have to make a decision. You know, I'd be a little concerned about that at this point.
Sarah? So I, I wanted to ask Joe, is there someone you know who is in this field who has talked to you about, here's the kinds of things we can offer?
I mean, there's lots of people I know that are in the field, yes.
I mean, in this, for this specific, let's hire somebody. Do you have someone or some company in mind already?
I, I may, again, I don't wanna bring up any of this. I, I, I originally, when I talked to Vicky, wanted to have an executive session on this. And I was told that I couldn't have an executive session, I, because we had to be in a pub. And then this is what we get is the defensiveness, which is I, I understand totally on everything. I get all the employees. But this is something that I believe that as a select board and as a group that we could have had discussion. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna say names or anything. Yeah, there's, there, there's more than just one person that could do this. And actually, Patrick brought up a great idea. The L C T is great, but I, I don't know if it's gonna get us what we need or get us the answers as quick as, as Patrick says that we're gonna want and give analysis.
Dan?
Second opinion is always a great idea, however, nobody does anything for nothing. Today we just sign bills from V L C T for things that we obviously use their services for. And I'm sure whoever you have is gonna charge. So I guess, I think what you should do is find out what it's gonna cost and bring it back for us.
I just told you, about like fifteen hundred thousand dollars.
Jeanette?
Right, um, so I, I can understand where you're coming from and I think that would be great to have you know, a, a larger view of everything. Um, I know like our liability insurance, our life insurance, all that is, comes from D L C T. Basically, a company that um, was recommended by them. So um, they have their hands in that as well. I think it's a good idea. I just think, given the timing, I think maybe if we brought this up in June perhaps um, to, to really take an in-depth view with only a month to go, I think would be um, stressful. But that's just my opinion.
So
I'm just, I'm just amazed and I understand all different points and sides of it, but thing, so. I'm just bringing it up. I thought I was trying to do something good for, number one, the employees and also looking out for the folks that have hired me to do what I did. If I can't get buy-in from the whole board, that's fine. But this is something I think that's, is, is warranted and needed, but if everyone else decides that it's not, I, I, I'm just one guy. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, Sarah, I don't think I don't think it's a bad idea. I'm not sure the timing is, uh, I could certainly see getting this, stop rolling your eyes.
Well, because, because you're, you're not, I'm sorry, can I just?
So Sarah has a floor, Joe. That we can spend the time thoughtfully to be ready for next year instead of doing it in a six-week period now, which, yes, the person may be able to do it, but wouldn't it make more sense? At least in my mind, it would make more sense to step back and talk about what it is we wanna offer, talk about what we do offer. Are there things that we wanna keep it the same and try to save money on it? Do we wanna change what we're gonna offer? How is that gonna be, uh, you know, how is that gonna be received by our employees and by the taxpayers? And take some time to do this in a thoughtful way, not just, you know, put our foot on the floor with gas and hope to get it done. Even if we get it done in time, I will always feel like we did it too quickly and we don't know for sure that we couldn't have had a better option if we had taken it more thoughtful about it. That's my thing. Comments from anybody? Does somebody wanna make a motion that we hire somebody to assist with the health insurance decisions?
I make a motion that we look into it, explore it and I, again, that the I'm not gonna even, just gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna roll my eyes and sit here and say, yeah, I, I, I just know that when we've asked for someone to come and help us and explain things to us, it wasn't able to in the past, have someone here and someone that looks at our particular ways, the way we've been supplying our health insurance benefits for our town. We haven't had anyone that could explain to us if it's better to go with one plan or another plan with us. Have you had someone that could put in, could do an analysis of the H R A, the way we've been doing it? With the silver plan, not going with the gold plan or if we've gone with the bronze plan, would, would we have saved money? Would we have given the same thing? Has anyone done that or can we hire V L C T to explain that to us? That's what I, I guess is the big thing I'm asking.
Uh, this, does somebody wanna second that?
I don't know what that motion was.
Make a motion that we look into this.
I make a motion.
I make a motion that we look into an advisor to assist us with the health insurance decisions.
There's a second.
And employee benefits package.
But before, before
Well, not just health insurance, employee benefits.
Put together a better, better look for the employees and for us as select board members.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jeanette?
Okay.
She's like, how is this worded?
So, well, no, I don't know. Um, so one, who is, is going to reach out to these advisors? Is that on my plate to do that? Cause I don't know who they are. Maybe you can give me contacts
So
to do that.
I would prefer, as we get into this sort of stuff, to speak to the select board in an executive session to decide how or what we're gonna actually do if we make a decision to do something. It's not, not to hide anything, it's just to, you know, what, what are we, what do we as five members wanna get out of it? That's why
I think that's completely public session. I have no way that we would ever go into existing, no, no, it does.
So so, I, I totally agree. So I, I mean, you're kinda looking at me. Uh, so the whole goal is to find out, you know, what plan is gonna be the best suited for the way we have a structure. Maybe there's a better plan that we could give to our town. Maybe there's something we could do as options to the town. The key thing that we need to do is obviously have a data collection where someone can obviously get that information, which is, you know, what, how much money we spent in the H R A last year, what we're spending this year. Analysis, the way we structure paying the fifteen hundred and the three thousand at the end as opposed to at the beginning. You know, how much the H R A are we using as a townwide? It's an analysis. Okay, so it's not like a, it's more of the data and putting into the data to get us a report. Okay, so.
Okay, you're done?
Yeah, sure.
Well, no, we haven't voted. We're discussing the motion and, and now Jeanette needs to speak.
Um, again, I think this is gonna involve a lot of effort and energy in a short amount of time, uh, but maybe it can be done. I don't know. Um, but I know, you know, both of the, the charts that I have given you break out each plan, each deductible, each everything that's going on, each, you know, what the H R A would be. Um, I mean, e- everything is here on these sheets that break out all of the plans and Blue Cross does have a multitude of plans. Um, and I'm not saying that the one we have is better than others. Um, it seems to have worked for the last, you know, maybe eight years that I've been doing this, um. I, I guess I just don't know who is going to be taking over. I mean, I can certainly reach out to the L C T, um. But if you have somebody in mind that thinks they can, you know, compile something for us in the short amount of time that we have.
So this is, yeah, this is the first stage. If we decide to do this, I could possibly come on and have that individual or two individuals come on and say, this is what I can do for the town at the next So that's the next phase of it. It's not, that's what I was told by Vicky. I'm trying to do this for it. I'm just being honest.
Yes.
So is that incorrect or incorrect?
No, you are being honest, but it's also, I don't feel that we have time to do this and do it properly. I firmly believe that this is something that we should do during the summer, um, and not even knowing what the rates are gonna be, to do this just to try to understand what we get, because this is a big project. And I don't, I think we're gonna end up right back with one of these plans and it will sputter wheels for a while. We're gonna, I haven't get, we haven't done any budgeting yet. And so I, I feel that it would be really short-sighted to try to cram it right now. But I don't think it's a bad idea. I like the idea, but yes. And so you know, if these rates are only going up four percent, next year is gonna be a big one. So that, that would be a really good opportunity to really get your hands on things, so.
So that
Yes, Joe.
So, no, I, I have my end up. So there's a first, there's a second. It's not to say that we can't get this person to look at it and start this year and not do anything next year. So we can have a vote on it and then I could bring that person in and see if it's something we actually want to do.
So
That's the, that's the goal. So maybe it's not for this year. Maybe it is going forward that we get an analysis and then brought to us for budgeting purposes, like you just said.
Some fun.
But I don't think we have to wait, like, why do I have to come up?
Cause we're heading
Yeah, I, I, I just said, I said, maybe it's not gonna, anything will happen this year. That's
Okay, Mike?
Um, I think we're kinda digging where I was going anyway, but speaking as an employee, but not for them. Last year, we seemed to make it clear that a plan we've had really works for us and nobody really wants to leave from it. I don't disagree with Joe that this is a good idea. I agree with the two of you that would feel, uh, as an employee, I would feel like it was rushed right now. Especially when we're looking at spending, per Joe's estimate, ten percent of the increase that we would be incurring this year, which everybody seems to think is phenomenally low, great. Seems like a good, good deal to move on right now, figure this out for next year. So that if it went to increase more, we have better data and better So that if it went to increase more, we have better data and better angle to figure out how to tackle this. And have buy in from the employees and they don't feel that this was thrown last time.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I I I I actually like this idea, but I agree with the sentiment that. I don't wanna rush this because I wanna do this right. I wanna do this with with thoughtful. Analysis and 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 enough due diligence to know that. You know, if we're gonna look at all of this, we're actually doing this, I mean, Vicky, along the lines of what you said, doing this in a way that we think. Benefits both both the town and the employees. Um, I I I I like, I like the idea of doing it. I think it's a lot to ask to try to get it done before this renewal cycle happens and and I feel like. You know, we, they're always, we're inviting more questions about whether we rush something rather than we're more thoughtful about it. Uh, I I would wonder maybe, Joe, if if we're, I don't I don't know who made the motion, maybe if it's. You know, let's withdraw the motion for now and then, or if they would withdraw the motion for now, allow Jean- Jeanette to do a little bit more investigation from V L C T. And then we figure out, you know, kind of what the right path is going forward for this. That'd be my suggestion.
I I don't wanna withdraw because.
You didn't make it.
Dan, Dan made it, I believe.
Dan, you have, have any opinion?
Well, yes, it's, uh, make the changes to the motion that we, uh, consider this. And the timing of it will be based upon whether it's a possibility to do it. And we should check through V L C T to see if there's something in place at this time.
Uh, that's kind of an odd motion. So basically, are you, if you wanna put a timeline on it or not?
Yes, uh, we will finalize it at the next meeting.
It's Jeanette.
Okay, so. We have another meeting in October, the twenty first, so if we had somebody, an advisor to come that day. To talk to us about it, that would be great, um, but we would need to by the November fourth meeting. We would need to have a decision about what plan we're doing. So, I don't know that, like, again, I don't know that it really gives.
And I will not be here for the November fourth meeting. I'm in India, so, yeah.
We just appointed board, he made an amendment to motion, and if you gotta get a second before you start.
Yes.
I just, I need to know what he meant by this.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Okay, do we have a second to Dan's amended motion?
Well, well, to keep an amendment to the motion.
Amendment, oh.
Okay, you're gonna have to do two votes then.
We have to vote on the amendment, then we have to vote on the primary, then we have to vote on amended motion.
Okay, do we wanna make a mo?
Well, so we've got a second first.
What, yeah.
Could you restate that? Cause I don't.
I don't know what the motion is.
I don't know if we, any of us really understood it.
Your amendment was a possibility.
Hold on, hold on, everybody. Okay, Dan, can you restate your amendment to the motion?
I believe the best liability that my motion was that we should look into the U F D. And other people and discuss it at the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, so. Let's vote on that. All in favor? Aye.
So now what is the motion?
The motion is. Jeanette might have that, no.
Quite a long time ago.
It's just I read this off.
Thought it's just just to, to hire an advisor. Is that not?
First, we 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 would have the advisor come and speak to us to see if we hired, that that was the whole plan of this whole.
Right, so you have them come at the next meeting to decide whether you're gonna hire them and then they have two weeks to.
Well, that's, so, that's kind of, that's kind of, that's kind of a mute subject, maybe. If if we hire the advisor and they have something that they can share with you before, that's great. If not, then we would just work on for next year and come up with some other different thing, that's all. But this may not be this year. I think we get through this motion, I think.
Okay.
Just have the next.
So, let's restate Dan's motion as he read it. So the main motion.
Yes, was to discuss the hiring of an advisor to assist with the health insurance decisions for all insurance.
Sarah.
I thought we included the benefits packages.
Benefits packages. Restate that.
Do you have a second?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Any more discussion? Hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry, I I have a point of order or a point of question, maybe. Isn't the motion what we've just been doing for the last twenty minutes, or we've been discussing this? I feel like we've made a motion to do what we've just been doing.
But we have voted on the motion.
Wow, okay, I got it, okay.
But it's kind of odd to have a motion to to to.
That's what I'm saying.
Have somebody come to a meeting, that's usually not what we do.
Right, so I I I I reiterate my my suggestion. That maybe we 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 do some more investigation. I don't know that we need a motion to do more investigation and then have a discussion. To maybe, maybe hire an advisor. It feels premature to do all that.
So Dan, do you wanna consider withdrawing your motion?
Yes, I'd be happy to withdraw my motion.
And would you be happy to withdraw your second, Jen?
I I I, yeah, I guess I'm withdrawing, whatever, so.
So if we want to bring some resources to the next meeting, Jeanette's gonna reach out to V L C T. You're gonna reach out to some people and that's what we'll do, and there's no motion.
I like it.
Okay.
I'm just trying to do this.
Okay, moving on because it's kind of a way off.
And that's, so that's okay.
Yeah, okay. Consider the Better Connections Grant Program. So. Yes.
I sent this out to, um, which. And honestly, I think that it can just defer this because I think the timing on this. Even though I think it was originally sent out early September. I didn't get it from Wyndham Regional until September twenty third. I mean, that the grant, um, I mean, it it's a hundred percent funded, it's great. Um, but I went on to the pre application forum, which is due by October twenty four. And you really need to have a name and a project leader and. Project location and a short description of the project. Again, I think. Unfortunately, I I don't think we have time to really pursue this in a way that would make sense.
Yes, sir.
Is this an annual or is it thirty one long?
Have you seen one of these before?
I guess, um, there was a link there. Yes, it, um, and Brattleboro, I guess, got this grant, um, a couple of years ago and I believe it was. Al Street, I wanna say, um, you know, just updating sidewalks and making it more, you know. Walking and biking friendly, that sort of thing. Um, but the gentleman from Wyndham Regional. Had mentioned something about that it might work as far as Dover. In Wilmington, perhaps combining efforts, um, you know, for one, one, we want, not group.
So, yes, what I'm trying to ask is if this is an annual thing, should we? Say we're gonna go for twenty twenty seven and we'll start now talking to Wilmington about putting an application.
But I do not know if it's a yearly program. I had never heard of it before, but this doesn't mean it's not an annual thing. So that's a possibility.
Did you have your hand up, Joe?
I, I, yeah. Trying to be correct and not overspeak my speaker of the house.
No, so what would you like to say?
So I'd like to say, so. I think this is a great thing. I spent a little bit of time to look at this. And I see that the deadlines, I'm, I guess I'm the the naysayer tonight at this meeting. But it's a lot of work because I think this would be great because we've been working on group one hundred. Forward work from east door from, from the end of west over up. And this would highlight some of the areas that we take and it doesn't cost us anything, but gives us a report. So I guess my question is, is it a lot of work to fill out the grant? Application to get, take a chance for this?
I think we would have to know exactly what we were gonna do. You you have to have a project in mind specifically to apply for.
We have a project that's been on the table. Or before I was on the board to have a pedestrian walkway go from the. End of west over on Route one hundred. Up through Mount Snow and possibly up through where we actually have some paperwork already. That goes up alongside, we had other, so we have a project that's kind of ongoing. I know we haven't been doing anything on it right now. So if this is a chance to maybe spearhead and get some information, I think it'd be helpful if it's a. If it's something we just don't fill up, the project was there. That we've had, we've had, I've seen big maps that we've had.
Yeah, we have, but those are preliminary and I think it's might, it might be more shovel ready stuff that they, you can. I, what we have is not shovel up, double ready. We have nothing really for a map to go to the south of here, so. I think, I mean, we don't have, we're not anywhere near that situation.
But I don't think Canal Street was shovel ready when they did Canal Street.
Well, how do you know?
Cause they haven't found anything? And now see that they're doing anything, so I I I'm not gonna disagree with what you say. I I guess I wish I had more time to explore and I'm gonna reach, I'm gonna look to you at the resource and says it's not. Worth it to put in, I I guess we don't do it.
Well, what I could do. Yes, at least is reach out to the folks who are are organizing this and. And ask.
Yeah, sure.
If it's something that's an annual basis, is it something that we need to have everything in place before we apply for it? Cause the actual application, besides the pre application, the whole application has to be done by October thirty first. So. It seems like it would be a lot to get into again.
I know this is your copy and I have already a piece of paper. Is the person, is like, there's something, who'd be the person that I would find out?
There's Colin at Wyndham Regional, who was the one who gave it to me. Then there's a couple of people, um, um, agency of transportation.
Okay. So Colin would be the first one. So let's.
Yes.
Can we table this to the n- next meeting and if for some reason it's something that we could possibly get on and get some information for. And it's not that much of a lift to, I know paperwork is. Seems like our state runs on it.
The pre thing has to be done by the twenty fourth and our next meeting is on the twenty first. So. All right, um. Anybody else feel that we have chance of opportunities to do this this year?
I have no idea what the preliminary application is. Okay, Jeanette explained it, but.
Okay, you can always have an emergency meeting if something happens. Yes. All right, uh, we're gonna move on. You guys are gonna look into that. Let's, uh, move along. We're going to. Dover Economic Development. Consider the DTAP applications Dover Technical Support Assistance Program.
Hi.
Oh, you're still there?
I am still there. I will say Sadie's algebra homework that like, we've been trying to figure out, um, less confusing than that motion. It's fine, um, yes, so DTAP, uh, so we received, uh, seven applications this year. Um, they totaled twelve thousand, two hundred ninety eight dollars and six cents. Um, we had budgeted twenty five thousand dollars. Um, I think these are all great projects, um. All of these businesses, you can only get DTAP funding every other year, um, so none of them, um, have received that in the past. Um, so I think they are all great things that we should approve.
Any comments?
Sarah. I just wanted to make a request, um. Particularly, um, um, Snow Republic because they have two locations. That we get, um. Hard proof that the security cameras were put in in the Dover location and not split between Dover and Brattleboro.
Yes. This is, this, what you're seeing is just for Dover.
Right, I understand that, that's what the application says. I'm asking for some backup after the fact.
Yes.
Okay.
And I have a comment on East Dover General. Great, good job.
Yes.
Hope you get your permits. Are you looking for the money before you get your permits from the town?
For the.
For the.
All the permits wrapped up, I would say in the next two weeks.
I'm the chair of the D R B. You're coming to see us on Thursday.
Oh, I thought you meant the permits for the the health and the fire and agents.
You also need the D R B change of use.
Right, 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 which I'm working with happening, yeah, I have.
So, um, can we make that one contingent on you getting all your permits?
Y- yeah, I I unless, I'd be at something else, I'd, yeah.
Doesn't that make sense? I mean, right, and it you, you buy a point of sale thing and then.
Yeah, we we plan to provide the system anyways beforehand and then Shannon made it.
Yeah.
Seemed like we would be very impressive if it, if it went through.
I think, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what Vicky's saying is don't even make the purchase until you've got all your permits in place. Because if anybody holds you up, you've bought this thing and you can't use it.
Yeah. Yeah, and you never know. I mean, some of this stuff goes haywire. I'm just trying to save you any cost and the town cost if it doesn't happen, you know what I mean? Or be able to get something that you know that you can return, you know, that kind of, kind of. And it just, sometimes these things take a lot longer than you know, unfortunately, and it's, that the downer, but.
And weirdo things happen.
Yes, Joe.
Worst case, they're, you can use it at the farm. Yeah, that's, so I'm just trying to.
Okay. Okay, any other comments about any of the applications?
Um, no, just one I sent in the email to you, but just a clarification that. The ten tables submission, um, is the former Deerfold Bar and Bottle, and so they had actually applied for the same project. Three years ago, um, didn't complete it at the time because they weren't sure they were staying open, um, and so the time just ran out on it. So it's just a resubmission of the same project.
Yes, sir. And they weren't, there was no money that exchanges back for yourself.
Okay. What are you, what are, what are you laughing about?
Hold on, there's a fire alarm going off. Behind me, so, sorry.
Oh, we didn't hear anything.
We can't hear it.
We can't hear it. So Bar and Bottle did not receive any funding the last time around, even though they, even though the application was approved, they didn't get money.
Right, they never completed the projects.
Okay. Any other questions? Somebody wanna make a motion?
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the DTAP applications for. Mount Snow Ski Works for web development in the amount of twenty five hundred, Eastover General Store. For point of sale in the amount of one thousand two hundred eighty four. Farm Road Estate for web development for two thousand five hundred, Snow Republic. For other technology, security cameras for one thousand eight hundred sixty nine dollars fifty seven cents. Um, Fairview Farm for web development for five hundred twenty five dollars, ten tables for point of sale for one thousand one hundred. Nineteen dollars forty nine cents and Deer Hill Inn for web development for twenty five hundred dollars for a total of twelve thousand, two hundred ninety eight dollars, six cents.
Second.
Subject to receipt of proof of completion. From the applicants.
All in favor? Okay. Sonicage Program application for Hideaway Inn.
Shannon.
Shannon.
Come back.
Switch over to your phone.
Sorry, the smoke alarms are going off in my apartment and they're hardwired.
Makes there's no fire.
Okay.
Do we have the actual, do we have an image of the?
Yeah, she reset that, yes.
Sorry, um, yes, for some reason that image didn't go in the attachment, but I did resend it. Um, they have their, uh, permit approved from zoning, um, it, the application. Um, it the application uh project cost is fifteen fifty one thirty three, so they are looking for. Uh, seven seventy five sixty seven in funding and this is for. Uh, what is now called the Hideaway Inn Mount Snow, which is a rebranding of the former Mountaineer.
Yes, and they have their zoning permit already for the for the the sign.
Yes, that is approved and included.
Okay. Any questions on this?
I didn't see a.
Oh, there it is, thank you. Oh, it doesn't seem to be in my. Okay, all in favor? If you wanna leave this perfectly fine, we're not gonna be upset. We're you're saying with looking like since, okay. All right. Now I need.
Thank you.
To the Westover Fire Department about the report of a grant award.
Thank you. Yeah, it 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 has not been like.
Hi, Rich. Hi, Rich, you having fun tonight? So, um, we have a. Uh, we've that for the last several years, we've applied for grants. We haven't gotten a bunch of grants since we got a radio grant when I first took over. And we got the generator grant and we had a bunch of small grants, um so. Dan Miller, who really likes paperwork and computers and technology. Did a really good job and for the last year, four years, he's been applying for grants. Um, we've been asking for between three and four hundred thousand dollars in grant money. Um, so this last and you gotta do it every year, um so you submit. They review you, they kick you out, then after so many times you've been kicked out, they say, okay, it's your turn in pickle barrel. So we requested three hundred sixty five thousand with the five percent cost and we got approved for two hundred seventy nine thousand. And the five percent cost share is thirteen thousand six hundred dollars. Um, so we asked for some S C B As, we didn't get those. Uh, we did ask for some masks, we did get those, but um they gave us a little less money than what we thought they were gonna be and again. You know, you're a year out, so you're trying to just guess what things been cost is, I always joke, if I. Predict the future cost of things, I you know, wouldn't be doing what I'm doing, I'd be playing the futures market. Um, then we got approved for, um, we had asked for twenty five sets of fire gear, we only got approved for eighteen and they also reduced them a little, but they. Part of that is we have to buy a turnout bag, but they do get us some, do buy us two pair of gloves and two um. Two hoods, which is nice. Um, and we also, as part of that, we got a extractor and dryer, we don't have a washing machine, we have an extractor, extracts all the bad stuff. So they can charge you a lot more for it. Um, again, they they reduce a little bit, there's a little extra work we have to do with that, cause we have to make sure we're not a historic building or anything that you know, where we're being located. We also asked for some valve nozzle, some of the stuff for um gated wise for our hydrant kits. And hydrant valves. And then we also asked for a bunch of hose. And probably fifteen, eighteen years ago, you guys, um. Gave me a bunch of money, but we kind of like updated all our hose, we had threaded four inch hose for some reason and. We got a bunch of a four inch, new four inch, an inch and three quarter and two and a half. We didn't have really any two and a half when I came in, they had a bunch of three inch, cause that used to be their supply line. Um, so we're gonna be able to really update our hose. Um, thermal imaging cameras, we got five, so we can have one on each truck and we got eight, um. Yeah, I'm sorry. Eight five gas meters, so we can help, you know, basically CO, oxygen, uh. The ethyl methyl bad stuff and. Um, and again, we probably, we have to go out to bid for all this and there's certain requirements we have to meet. But the first thing, we have thirty days to um to accept the um accept the grant. And so we gotta do that by it's a couple of weeks, so before we accept it, granted, just want you folks know. On the thirteen s- six, you know, we have the equipment budget. So and we also have some money in the capital for hose for this year, so we can definitely cover all of that. We wouldn't have to come to you for any extra money. And um I suggest that you say, yes, it's okay, and I will call, send Dan a text and he will push the button and we'll accept it.
Okay, so that wasn't really what this, which other item says. It says, report on the grant award, it doesn't say and potentially accept.
Okay, well, I've actually never come to the board before to accept a crime, but it was suggested I do it this time.
Okay.
No, well, also, I mean, you know, the other grants, like we've told you that we've applied for grants before, we just never got them and. I thought we were two more years out before we get it. So.
Joe.
Can I just ask, so you've you got, is this, you went through all that, so how much monetary? Funds did we gain in this?
Two hundred seventy nine thousand dollars.
So you get.
If we don't, we don't get that. So wait, just as an example, I'm just gonna pick a line. We asked for four hydrant valves and we got fourteen hundred dollars for those four hydrant valves, right? Let's say we go out and those hydrant valves total twelve hundred dollars. The for the four of them, they don't give us the extra money. I mean, it's a. And it's a reimbursing grant.
And if you go out for bed and then the product buyer, we have and have to make the difference up, yeah.
Or not purchasing, give them and not.
Take the money.
We we they don't send us money. They, it's not like they're gonna send us two hundred and eighty thousand dollars and we get to spend it. It's, we have to give it to bid and then we can also go back and we can ask questions or even say. Hey, look, you know, you told us it turnout gear was forty hundred dollars set, we can't find anything anywhere for less than five thousand. Or we can just pay the extra two hundred bucks. I mean, there there will be some, um, there'll be some work we have to do. We, you know, we have to meet cer- certain requirements, we have to prove there's no P F O S and. Um, we were we're buying as American made usually. I I know that was some of the grant money on some of the water systems, like all the components remain USA, so it's. Again, there's there's a lot more work to do, but I just need to start moving it forward.
Yeah, so. So this is a is a good thing that we got all this grant money, cause this is things that we needed, so. So whoever filled out the grant and kept trying, they they're saving. And getting things that the fire department needs.
Yeah, we didn't, like, we didn't pick.
So it's a good.
We didn't buy five garbage trucks or, you know, pickups for all the officers or anything like that, I mean, it's.
Yeah, so stuff we needed, it's going to the bottom lines, helping us offset, so that's a great.
Yeah.
But I see your frustration of how it it takes a lot of time and then if you went out and given the money, you know, buying you a, it it's. So 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 it's kind of, it's like.
And it just, it's kind of, um. You know, apply five times, you get it on sixth time. Um, I know Dan has some contacts and he keeps calling them up saying, how are we doing, how we doing, and oh, yeah, remember that grant. And then we didn't get it. They remembered it, but I guess. Not good, but again, it seems like they move them around. I think Dan sent something, I don't know. Here, I think there was like three, only three to four departments in Vermont this year.
Oh, good, congratulations. So if you don't normally come to us to accept these grants. I guess you should follow the same procedure because otherwise we can't approve this tonight. We we can't, I mean, it wasn't worn that way, so we just can't.
That's my fault, I um. No, it we we got awarded, but we have to accept it.
I think you will probably accept.
Okay.
The support of the board.
And then I'll. And then I'll let you guys, you know, I can, well, once we accept it, you know, I gotta connect with Jeanette and and um. With Marco about some of those.
So you're saying.
Yes.
So we have to approve you getting the money?
No.
So then why does he have to come back there?
But I will just keep you guys informed.
And and with the approval, is anybody, is everybody on board with this?
Sure.
Okay, fine, so with our blessing, go forward.
Why, thank you.
Okay, now we have a fire department update.
Just I had that in there in case you guys have any questions. Pardon?
You didn't tell you had one more thing that you couldn't think of, so that's what I.
Yeah, I still can't think of.
Shannon needs help at her house.
You know what? As I get older, there's these, I call them bright shiny objects because I remember something and then I'm like. And then all of a sudden, look over there and something bright shiny or something else comes up, yeah, and then I forget. I I but I also, if you had any other questions or thoughts or anything you need, no. But if not, I appreciate it. We always appreciate your support and we'll um we'll keep you up to date when it's happening.
Okay, we appreciate the effort to get the money. Thank you, Rich.
I just wanna recognize Dan Miller.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. Dan Miller did a great job, he was consistently consistent to get that money. He should be. I think.
Thank you, Dan. By the border, yes.
Yeah, and um. Like again, he's so, now he's creating a bunch of work for everybody else.
Okay, okay, I need a motion to go on the Board of Liquor Control.
Motion to go in the board of liquor control.
All all in favor? Okay, Sarah.
Okay, I make a motion. Uh, that we approve the request to cater permit for Deerfield Beverage Concepts LLC for the McGovern wedding at the town hall. Dover Town Hall on October twenty fifth, the first and third class licenses for Black and Magrill LLC. And the second class license for East Dover General Store LLC, subject to receipt of all appropriate documents and fees.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to come out?
Motion about the Board of Liquor Control.
All there? We have the consent to Jeanette, the to approve the minutes of September sixteen, twenty twenty five. To make emotionally approve the minutes of September sixteen, twenty twenty five.
Okay.
I was not here.
Okay. Uh, any changes or corrections?
I would like to not, I I should say, I wish there was a lot of correct.
Sons?
Should I say it? As we vote on it, I did watch the whole thing, so I felt. Bad for my fellow board members to go through that meeting and I wish I could have been here in person.
Okay.
And had some responses to quite a bit of things on it. But I did not get to and I get to not vote that I.
Okay. All in favor? And then Joe, you abstained?
I was, well, I keep I have abstained.
All, I'm so forward one, for a lunch.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve the warrants of September twenty seventh for two million nine hundred twenty two thousand two hundred forty one dollars and eighty cents.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, uh, and FYI for everybody, uh. The warrants have a big school, River Valley School bill, which is what most of this is is. Okay, FYI Town Fair, October eighth. South Burlington, D R B hearing, October ninth at seven P M. Water Task Force at at October twenty second at five P M and zoning by law update. Hell hell, we should all be there, uh, I, October twenty seventh at six thirty P M. Any liaison reports? Okay, no executive session needed. I'd like to adjourn this fairly marathon meeting at eight thirteen. Jeanette.